Hello, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Mark Leonard and welcome to this Zoom call where we're going to hear from candidates for the Reno City Council and the Washoe County School District. Fourteen total candidates were invited to join us today and ten were able to accept our invitation. This call is a nonpartisan effort organized by Reno residents. The format is that we'll give each candidate up to five minutes to discuss topics that they would like their potential voters to consider. Unfortunately, we will not have time to present questions from the audience, but we encourage you to submit questions using the Q and A feature down below, and we will pass those questions along to each candidate. You have the option to ask your question anonymously, but if you'd like to receive a response from the candidate, be sure to leave your contact information. We're going to start with the city council candidates, followed by the school district candidates. Here's the order. We'll be asking each candidate to speak. First up is J D Dracula in Ward One for the city council and followed by Jenny Breckus, the incumbent from Ward One. Then we're going to have Darla Fink speak from Ward Five, followed by Neoma Jordan, who's the incumbent in Ward Five. And then Rudy Leon from Ward Three is going to be speaking. On the school district, Jeff Church is going to be leading from for the school district from District A, followed Seventh by Matthew Montanese from District E. And then Eighth is Angie Taylor, who's the incumbent in District E, and then followed by Diane Nicolette, District G at Large and Craig Wester, District G at Large. Thank you very much, and we're going to get going. And JD, why don't you lead us off here, please?
Great. Thanks, Mark. I appreciate it. Thank you for putting this together. I thought I'd start off with a little background. I'm a fourth generation Nevada, and my family has been here since 1942. My grandpa Duke Dracula raised nine kids on West Plum, and we still own that house. I've actually lived in this ward for thirty-three years. I'm also a husband, a father to a seven-year-old boy. I'm also a small business owner. And about four years ago, my company decided to help a local nonprofit, and we came across the Yeti House. And for those of you that don't know, they serve our youth homeless population. And in 2016, I was fortunate enough to be invited onto their board. Shortly after joining, I was voted into a leadership role, first as their secretary and then their VP, and now in my second term as their board president. During my tenure, I've led the organization from a drop-in center that operated Monday through Friday to a twenty-four-seven facility that serves over forty homeless youth with overnight services. We're really proud of what we've done there, and this experience is the catalyst for my run. I've seen firsthand how bad our homeless issue is, and I've seen how poorly our local government is doing in regards to solving it. In order to make a huge impact and solve this issue, we must have a strategy aimed at prevention and housing with a strong focus on options for those who live along our river and in our public areas. Washoe County School District has identified up to three thousand kids K through twelve that are categorically homeless. This is a homegrown issue. We must catch our youth before they fall into the spiral of chronic homelessness. National HUD data states that if you can intervene with a homeless youth before the age of twenty-five, then you have an eighty-five percent chance of not becoming chronically homeless as an adult. Serving this demographic will make a lasting impact on our community. In regards to housing, I know your next question is, how do I plan on paying for this? I get it. It's a good question. I will not burden our citizens with extra taxes or assessments. When I'm your councilman, my first proposal will be to recruit and hire a national grant writer. The city of Reno once had this position, but was lost due to the last recession. Unfortunately, Nevada is a donor state, which means we give more in federal taxes than we receive back into our community. This grant writer will be focused on acquiring federal and non-local private funding aimed at financing preserving low-income housing solutions. We do need stronger shelter services, more transitional living options, and permanent supportive housing, which will serve our disabled, our veterans, and elderly. We must also strategize on how to provide more mental health services and substance abuse centers. Before COVID-19, we were able to campaign more traditionally by knocking on doors, and I started meeting my neighbors back in November. During that time, I personally knocked on two thousand doors and had over two hundred interactions. The campaign has adapted safely to communicate with my voters now, but it is clear that my ward cares deeply about solving the homeless problem, but another concern of theirs is public safety, which includes fire and police. I do not support defunding the police. Our law enforcement have the most dangerous job in the community and deserve our support. I do believe in finding ways to enhance how our police can better serve all of our citizens. I believe that if you have a gun and a badge, that our community should hold you to the highest standards, but I will not turn my back on them in the process. Once again, my name is JD Dracula, and I'm currently running for Reno City Council Ward One. Thank you for your time today, and I look forward to your support on November third.
Terrific, JD. Really appreciate that. Our next speaker is Jenny Breckus, who is the incumbent from Ward One. Jenny, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Great. Happy Labor Day weekend to everyone. Thank you for hosting this event today. I think it's a it was a really good idea. I think it's a nice time to have discussions like this. My name is Jenny Breckus. I'm the Ward One Reno City Council member and candidate for my third term for reelection. I decided to step up to run for the Reno City Council in the depths of the last recession when I felt that our city had not been poised well to weather that recession. A lot of money had been spent in the last boom, two booms ago, but it had been overspent and not spent in my mind on the priorities of Reno residents in particular. The city took on a lot of debt to acquire from another public agency, the bowling stadium, built the event center, but at the same time, it allowed Moana Pool, which had served our community for three generations, to fall apart. And so when I looked at who was on the city council, recognizing that term limits were bringing in a new political dynamic in our region, I decided to step up. At that time, I'd been a Mount Rose Elementary School parent, a mother raising my daughter here. My husband and I had moved here in nineteen ninety-eight to find a place where the mountains met the desert because we met in Albuquerque, and that's where we feel home and comfortable, and it felt very invested. So I did step up in recognition that those I saw who'd been serving on the city council, they didn't have a leg up on me. I am a city specialist. My father, when I was growing up in Northern California, sat on the town council of our town. I used to go with him to look at property sites for development and because they sat as the planning commissioner there also, and that experience promoted me to obtain a advanced degrees in public administration and city planning. And in two thousand and eleven, when I decided to run, I'd already worked for three cities, including the city of Reno, and felt I had some expertise to offer to the council, and I've run twice before. But those were dark days at the Reno City Council. We came in with just tremendous financial burdens at that time, and the things that I'm proud of that we did was right-size our budget to move into the next growth, do a master plan for our town to set the template for the long-term vision, a downtown action plan. That was something that I brought to the council in November, December of two thousand and twelve to advance, and lead us on to the next phase of Reno, which was this last boom. And so this last boom, for me, particularly representing Ward One, where we have very old, mature neighborhoods, is making sure that the infrastructure investment is going into those old neighborhoods to maintain deteriorating infrastructure, and also as we grow and welcome new growth and the opportunities that come with that, making sure that our public safety services are not spread too thin. One of the most important things that I've been proud of at the city council is that as we started to grow, coming out of the recession, we were able to staff up again the skyline fire station that represents that serves a far large amount of Ward Ones. So that's been very important to get going. And then other projects, the Midtown Street just opened up. Great improvements were made on California Avenue, a lot of drainage and ditch improvements. This is the bread and butter of a Reno City Council member representing an older area. And so those are some of the things that I've been very focused on. But here we are again, facing another downturn, very uncertain economic times, and there's a lot of complexity to it. For example, because my opponent just mentioned, I'm very proud to have the support of all of our law enforcement around the community and the state. I sought their endorsement, and they supported me, and I support them, but I support Black Lives Matter, but I do not support defunding the police. In fact, as we look at our budgetary in the future, which is coming up to the council next week, we may be in the typical situation of having to make some difficult budgeting decisions related to that function very soon. And so there's a lot of complexity, a lot of different ideas about how Reno should move forward, and I believe that I bring the expertise and experience to help us guide it in this new times and with a lot of optimism because now are the times for leadership. I think I've proven very strong leadership, and I'm proud of the transparency that I brought to city council, including lobbyist registration and campaign finance reform. Those were not things that I sought to do when I ran in two thousand and twelve, but bringing transparency and ethics reforms to the Reno City Council is something that I've been a champion for, and I think there's more to do in that realm as we want a city hall that works for all and not just a few. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Jenny. Next, we have Darla Fink from who is running in Ward Five.
I think I'm running for Reno City Council in Ward Five. I'm here to tell you why you should vote for me and why I'm running. So I grew up here. I'm a graduate of UNR, and I have a master's degree in public administration. I obtained my real estate license when I was nineteen and went to work for my mother's brokerage firm and then in casinos and finally at the Department of Labor instead for Job Corps. There I had the privilege of spending the next twenty-three years helping provide job training and education to at-risk youth. I started at the bottom there on graveyard art on Collins and ended up as Director of Finance and then Deputy Director in charge of operations until I left over two years ago. Now I'm running for office because the city of Reno Ward Five needs my education and experience, but most of all, my integrity. I'm running against the incumbent, Naomi Jordan, and this would be her last term in office based on term limits. And if elected, she has no reason to represent the interest of Ward Five because she can't be held accountable for reelection. And speaking of accountability, if you have an opportunity, I'd like you to view her contributions and expense reports. They're posted on Secretary of State's site for public viewing. She's accepted money from many developers and casino interests. Most recently, as reported by the Reno Gazette Journal, she accepted thirty thousand dollars from developers for the controversial Daybreak Project in South Reno and ten thousand from the developers who tore down the Lakewood Tens Courts and were supposed to build a three-hundred-and-fifty-unit apartment complex, then stopped work on the project and went through their application, likely because the project was drawing too much press and public scrutiny. So just to explain how a ward council person works, even though you're elected by the residents in your particular ward, each councilperson has a full vote on every issue that comes before the city council. My opponent did not recuse herself from voting on either of these issues, even though she took money from both of these developers for her reelection campaign. Is this the kind of representation you want? Where's the honesty and integrity? I mean, we talk about transparency in government, but this kind of thing is going on on local government daily. How can elected officials address the most pressing issues of our community like upgrading of critical infrastructure, housing shortages, and environmental concerns if you're beholden to special interests because they paid for your election? I could tell you that I accepted no contributions from outside influences, only family members and a few neighbors, none of which have projects coming before the city council. They're just concerned community members like you and I, who want to see this what's actually best for the community takes priority. I will come to this office beholden to no one. I will judge each issue on its merit, namely the benefit and impact on the community, infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, police and fire included, and I will recuse myself from voting on issues where I might have a personal interest. So in essence, I come to you with no baggage, just the educational experience to get Reno through the ongoing budget rightsizing from the COVID pandemic shutdown. And I know how to make hard choices. I'm not afraid to make them. I know the benefits and pitfalls of private sector and government collaboration. Every year, we're asked to do more with less, and having experienced oversight and constant reductions of budgets, including procurement, maintenance, administration of a large facility, faculty, students, and their parents, has taught me how to prioritize and utilize strengths and appreciate everybody for their differences as well as their similarities. I'm a creative, critical thinker who is solution-oriented and gets the job done on time, on budget. Problem-solving and effective budget budget-conscious implementation is my forte. Above all else, I understand people and what motivates them. I never take people's behavior personally. I truly like everyone, and I know that sounds corny, but I make the point of looking for the good in everyone I meet. I was also a counselor and counseling manager at Job Corps, and that's huge because I know how to listen. I know that everyone has a story, and believe me, once you know someone's story, you can't help but love them. So in closing, I'm Darla Fink. You're truly transparent and representative candidate for Reno City Council, and I'm asking for your support and vote. I look forward to when COVID crisis is decided and I can meet you all in person and get to know your story, and I hope that time comes soon. In the meantime, you can contact me on my website at www.think2020.com or on Facebook at Think2020. I'd love to hear your comments and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Darla. Next up, we have Neoma Jordan, who is the incumbent in Ward Five.
Thank you, and thank you, Mark and Sandra, for having us today. I appreciate you putting this together in these in these difficult times. And I think it's important that I start out by saying what we need more of in our community and in our in our entire nation is less petty personal attacks that are empty in nature and more about what platforms we have to bring us forward and proof of the things we've done in our community. My name is Neoma Jordan, and I have had the great honor of representing Ward Five for the last eight years. It Ward Five, for those that may not be familiar, from west to east, the jurisdiction is parts of Verdai, Olive Somerset, part of what's considered Old Northwest Reno, through the university area down into downtown, the majority of downtown, and part of East Forest Street. It's a beautifully diverse ward, and I have had the distinct honor of representing it for the last eight years. I was born in Reno, native Nevada. I was raised on a ranch that my father built out on the banks of the Truckee River, where I went through grade school, and upon graduating from high school, moved back to Reno to begin my twenty-year career and put myself through college. I worked at McDonnell Corona Law Firm for twenty years, where I started as a runner and worked my way up through the organization, again, while I put myself through college at night, and understood a lot of the organizational struggles that business has in operating, from negotiating insurance to employee issues to meeting payrolls. And after twenty years, I wanted to apply that small business expertise in the government sector so that there could be a strong voice for small business in on the city council. Also, having a family and raising them here, I have two sons, one that just graduated from UNR and one that just entered UNR. I wanted to make sure that we have a quality of life that they can enjoy as we move forward. What I want to talk about now is some initiatives that I've been involved in, so you kind of know it's not just lip service. It's actually where I've worked to move the needle on issues and improve our community. Just yesterday, I know I and JD Dracula did some work down on the river cleaning up some of the encampment trash with regards to our homeless and interfacing with that population, which is growing. We heard a statistic that it has grown nationwide in our cities by sixty-four percent during the COVID crisis, and working together to come up with solutions on the homeless issue is going to take all of us working together. It's not going to take one jurisdiction or one issue. It's going to take all of them to move the needle, which is something I'm very proud of. I initiated the Reno Works Program, a work program that takes individuals from the homeless shelter, and they're put through a ten-week work program where they learn life skills and they clean up parts in the river. And at the end of it, they have employment and they have moved into supportive housing. That has been a very successful program, so successful, in fact, that for the last few years, it has been solely funded by the private sector because they saw the benefits in it. So those types of creative programs that we need to foster and continue to deploy in our community. Traffic trailers is another initiative that I have. We have speeding issues in our neighborhoods. We have certainly we want safety within our communities and our children, and these traffic trailers are really unique, but they capture data, put it back to our police department, and let them deploy resources more efficiently and effectively to deal with some of these neighborhood speeding issues. The Be Safe, Be Seen flag program that was initiated by some of our Girl Scouts and myself, where it really raises awareness as they cross the street, and that program is being deployed in many areas across the entire region. Parks are incredibly important. I helped initiate a park in our inner city as well as a park in Somerset, and having that recreational opportunity, particularly now, is of critical importance when we're all kind of stuck inside. We want to have a nice park to go and enjoy. Affordable housing is a huge issue. We have a tremendous deficit in our housing of all spectrum, and we need to do more in that regard. We've done some very creative things with regards to the dorms on Sage Street, and I want to see those replicated even further. Huge advocate for small business, particularly always, but particularly during COVID. I want to see all of our businesses open, all of them. I advocated for hair and nail salons to get open a few weeks ago, and we were lucky enough to see that open, and I've now been advocating for bars and taverns. I think they all need to be open and given an opportunity to try to survive. One of the things I think we need to understand when it comes to law enforcement and our first responders is they are underfunded and strapped as it is. We need to continue to support them. I too do not fund, sorry, I do not support defunding the police, rather always looking inward to understand things that can be improved, but we must continue. And as I move forward, I will continue to work to help us through the COVID situation, fiscally responsible. Public-private partnerships are so important as we move forward, and I want to thank you all for having me again today. Thank you for putting this together, and I'm asking for the community's support to help me continue our momentum forward and help us through this crisis for four more years. Thank you.
Thank you, Neoma. Next up, we have Rudy Leon from Ward Three. And Rudy, go ahead and unmute yourself and have at it. And before Rudy gets started, I would like to encourage those in the audience, if you have questions that you'd like to submit to the candidates, go ahead and put those into the Q and A, and we will pass them along after this call is over. Go ahead, Rudy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I'm Rudy Leon. I'm running for City Council Ward Three, and I do want to encourage people to follow up on what Mark just said. With only five minutes, I've chosen mostly to introduce myself with this time, and I hope that if you have questions, you will send them in, and I'd be happy to answer them. I could talk for days about why I'm running. So I have lived in Reno since two thousand and twelve, and before that, I've lived in seven states. I choose to live here. I am not born and bred in Reno, but I am battle-born. This is a place that I love and a place where I have been extraordinarily critically involved. I am single. I am a renter, which is a perspective that is not currently on city council, and I think desperately need it. I'm currently self-employed, but I have spent the last fifteen years prior to that as an university librarian, a research librarian, and a university administrator. I am very critically active. I decided to run for city council as I explored various things about how Nevada and Reno worked. Every state that I've lived in is different, and I'm a naturally curious person, so I took time to dig in and figure out how we did what we did. And I realized that my unique skill set could be of use on the city council. I'm a lifelong educator, and I apologize if I'm looking down at my notes. I tend to talk a lot, and I have to keep myself on script. So I'm a lifelong educator by training. I'm an outreach librarian, which means that I work with communities to create programs and services for them. I did that with diverse communities within universities, but the principles apply to working in city government or political organizing. It's the same principles. I'm also a mid-level administrator. I've been an associate dean, and in that role, I've managed eight-figure budgets. I've worked with a team to do that, which does not make it easier, a team of six. I've supervised staff. I've done strategic planning at the organizational and divisional level. I have done goal-setting and assessment at the personal and team level. These are all qualifications not well represented on city council, and I think that we could use them. So part of what I'm doing with this introduction is I think a lot of why I'm running is process, and process isn't sexy. There are issues that I think are vitally important, but process is what helps us get through the hard times and move through things more easily. A lot of the work that I have done comes down to community building. I'm a student of Smart Growth, which is not just a catchphrase. It's an actual formal movement within urban planning that encourages a mix of building types and uses, diverse housing and transportation options, development within existing neighborhoods, and community engagement. I have attended Strong Towns conferences, and I have attended right before COVID hit, the meeting of the Minds Conference in Arizona that was scary to fly home from. So as a librarian, I studied design thinking, which is something that follows similar principles. You focus on the people you're creating for, which leads to better services and internal processes. Everything that I've done is people-oriented and community-oriented, and developing the process is to do that on a larger scale than just one-on-one. And one-on-one is important, but that doesn't solve the problem for everybody. It just solves a problem for the person in front of you, which is important, but you can do more. So over the last four years, I've attended Reno Citizens Institute. I'm a member of my neighborhood advisory board. I serve on the Multimodal Advisory Committee for RTC. I've served on the Midtown Public Art Committee. I was on the Special Events Committee. Our sculpture should be up on Virginia Street sometime very soon. I applied for and attended the Regional Citizens Police Academy last year. I've applied to serve on the Tenet Advisory Board and the Special Events Committee. I'm an ACLU-trained organizer, a member of the N double E C P, and an active member of my synagogue's social action committee. I volunteer at a variety of organizations throughout town, helping out in as many ways as I can be of use while I'm also supporting myself. I'm a volunteer lobbyist at the legislature for several organizations, and I'm just generally very active in Reno city life. So I decided to run when, after a meeting at the Neighborhood Advisory Board by NDOT about the Spaghetti Bowl project, we were told that over three hundred homes were going to be taken, were going to be seized in the process in my ward alone. And when I was finally able to meet with my council member, which took an extraordinarily long time, and I asked him about that, his response was, let's go knock doors and make sure they know that their homes are going to be seized. And I was just flabbergasted, but that is kind of the response that I've come to expect from city council, incredibly reactive and not terribly effective and not looking proactively into the future and how we are going to solve problems we are creating. We absolutely need to do the Spaghetti Bowl project. We cannot displace three hundred homes in Ward Three alone, three hundred affordable homes. How are we, what are we going to do about that as we move forward on this other project? We must get more proactive and organized in our thinking to prevent future problems from coming down the road. We may not get to that displacement for ten years until they get to the Ward Three section of the construction, but I don't think that we can count on having affordable housing in Reno to place people into. Right now, the Red Cross can't place people closer than Fallon or Gardinerville if they're displaced after a fire. Am I up? I went off script. Sorry. Please ask me questions. I stopped looking down at my script, and I got into it. RudyforReno@gmail.com and RudyForMeReno.com. I'm so sorry. Next time, I follow my script.
No worries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, so those are all the city council candidates that we have today. Next up is Jeff Church, who is running for the school district trustee in District A. Jeff, you're up.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jeff Church. I'm running for Washoe County School District, District A, which is South Reno and Incline Village. I'm running because I care deeply about the quality of education. I care deeply about at-risk kids, and it's the most important elected position with all due respect to the others. And by the way, thank you, everybody, for being here, and I'm disappointed at those that chose not to attend. But it's a billion-dollar budget, and we're responsible for the education and safety of sixty-four thousand students. And right now, unfortunately, in my opinion, the school district's dysfunctional. We're facing a fiscal tsunami like we've never seen before. Nevada is worst in the nation for education, and many will say, well, that's Nevada. That's not Washoe County. If Washoe County were a state, we would be second worst in education. Our ACT scores for the state, seventeen point seven. For Washoe County, seventeen point nine. The average nationwide, twenty. Menno Private High School, twenty-nine. So we have to do better, except, you know, just doing it the way we are is not acceptable. So let me tell you a little bit about me, Jeff Church, and my background. I'm a Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Air Force Reserve Commission, retired. I'm a Reno Police Sergeant, retired. I hold two college degrees. I was the board president of a five oh one C three homeless center. I'm a team player, and I've served on two different boards, two different HOA boards. So I know how to act and behave on a board and work as a team player. I taught recruiting nationwide, including for Clark County Schools for both teachers and for law enforcement. I'm also very concerned about ESL. I'm a Spanish speaker, so I bring that to the table. I'm also very concerned about ESL. I'm a Spanish speaker, so I bring that to the table. So I think that's a pretty exceptional background to bring to the table for the school board and, you know, to prevail. Now, I do have to use the rest of my time to contrast my opponent, who is not here today and who chose not to be here today. Mr. Kelly resigned under pressure as a member of the board, and I hope that he updates his website to reflect that and that he updates it to reflect those endorsers that have since pulled out. Now, Mr. Kelly's first all life is off limits, not going to go there. But what's not off limits, and it affects me personally, is the allegation in the news media that he created fake identity social media accounts. That is outrageous. These accounts purportedly criticized others. I saw them. They're vile, some of the comments. And it's totally unacceptable in a political climate or any other climate. They allegedly were created so they could boost him, favor the school district or his other occupation, and bash others that he disagreed with all the time using a fictitious name. That's outrageous. I know none of the folks here would ever do that. However, I do have one other question. All the other, I ask all the other school district members, whether they're running or not, did they know about this? Did they keep silent when he was doing these fake identities, or did they speak up, or did they not know? But I think that's a question that needs to be asked. So once again, my name is Jeff Church. I'm running for Washoe County School Board, District A. My email, correction, my website is watchdogjeff.com. That's watchdogjeff.com. And again, I bring a lot to the table in terms of my background. I've been an active person in the school district, attending many, many meetings, not only the Board of Trustees, but chair, building, audit committee, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not going into this with my feet cold. I definitely understand the school district. And I also believe I should be appointed to the vacancy created by Mr. Kelly so that I can get my feet on the ground right away. There's no sense in appointing somebody for three months. And obviously, with Mr. Kelly's situation, there's only two of us on the ballot. So I'm looking very, very strong. I was looking strong before, but now I'm looking extremely strong. So I hope I get to serve immediately on the board, and that actually gives the voters a chance to look at me and see if I'm a good team player during those two months before the election. So I think that's a great idea to get me on there, and they get to vet me. They get to do a background on me, and I'm not afraid of that. That's something that doesn't happen in a normal election. So Jeff Church for School Board, District A, watchdogjeff.com, and thank you very much, and thank everybody else for being here.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Next up, we have Matthew Montanese. Did I say that right, Matthew?
Yes, sir, you did. Montanese, you got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, so, you know, here we are again. I'm up in Tahoe right now, helping a colleague who is unable to be here, and there was an emergency. But since we've been provided this time, and I really appreciate it, we can go ahead and talk about a couple of things. First of all, my name is Matthew Montanese, and I'm running for Washoe County School Board Trustee, District D, serving McQueen, TMCC, and Hug High School. Thank you, everyone, who's here right now, because this shows that you care for kids in our community and our teachers, and this is really important. I have a beautiful wife. We raise three children together, and we raise them with love and respect. We raise them with discipline. We raise our children with character, and this is something that really is going to support our children moving forward when they join our communities. We really need to teach our children respect, dignity, humility, and allow them to be adults and teach them to be adults as they move forward. I believe that this is going to be very important. I coach baseball, and it's a joy for me to be out on the field with the kids. You know, spending a little bit of time with a child and watching their confidence and their development is so important. And this is something that I'm passionate about, and this is something that I think that we can do a little bit better job in. And this is what I do as a public servant away from being involved in public service. But I believe that I show my public service by showing up and being there for the kids and showing them the way, going the way, and knowing the way. I believe that this is very important. I'm running because I have a passion for our children. I have a passion to see our students win, our community win. I want to see you win. I want to see the educators win. I want to see that everyone comes together. Our children, they belong to the parents, and public ed should understand this fact and build upon it and respect it for the sake of our good families and good communities. We need to push past mediocrity and pull our students out of educational malaise. I want to help our children understand their inherent gifts and talents and interests to propel them forward towards an opportunity. And I believe right now, we're kind of lacking those opportunities. We're showing the children the core four, and then we're showing them the door. So we kind of set them possibly in a box at times if we're not quite sure how to take care of what is intrinsically valuable with the student, with the child. And instead of showing the child where their value and where their endowment would be able to serve them best into the future, we're just kind of showing them, you know, like I said, the core four and then the door. I also believe we need to provide an A, B, and C path to the child, you know, not always college, maybe an apprenticeship, certification, some on-the-job training or vocational experience. I think that this is going to be something that provides the opportunities that our students need in order to, you know, really be relevant when they get out of school. And this is going to lift the burden that's on our local economy and our community. And we sure don't want to force the child because they don't have an opportunity to hold a burden on themselves. I want to bring our communities back together, and I really mean this. And it's going to take trust, and this is what we do as public servants, is we create trust, and this is what I will do. I want to take the handcuffs off of teachers and provide both sides of the story to the students so that they can use their own cognitive thought mechanism to ask any questions, you know, to test that mechanism, to develop that mechanism of thought and common sense, but then to ask the question to their parents if they have any questions. I believe that this is very important. We are seeing higher college readiness and graduation rates right now from our magnet schools like Coral Academy and places like that, the Science Academy on Edison. And, you know, this is telling us a story. If our college readiness scores average forty percent for our standard schools and for our magnet schools, we're seeing sixty percent. I think that there's more opportunities that the children are getting in the magnet schools than they are in the standard, you know, standard schools. And so this is something that I believe strongly in, and I believe that this is going to motivate, you know, that the children need motivation in order to move on. The national ACT score was twenty point nine. Our state was seventeen point nine, and our county is seventeen point six. And, you know, we can't be satisfied with that mediocre number anymore, but we have to find the engine. We need to find the root of what's driving that. I am perplexed as to why some of us boast about higher graduation rates all the while knowing that the requirements to achieve these rates were relaxed. And I think people need to ask these kind of questions. Research shows that ninety-five percent of our students want to go to college, but only eighty-five of our students actually make it through high school. So we have an opportunity, and I think we need to stop, we need to stop from the stagnation and allow for, you know, children to be creative and actually go after what's intrinsically going to motivate them, who they are, so that they're not trying to be, oh, are we getting?
Time's up.
Yeah. Hey, thank you. It's time to convey this message of hope and excitement back to our schools. Take a look at my website, MatthewNumberFourSchools.net. Thank you all.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Angie Taylor, who is the incumbent in District D. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you, Mark, and of course, thank you to everyone who tuned in. Thank you to all for throwing your hats in the ring to run, all of us, because it is not an easy thing. I was a couple minutes late jumping on. I want to apologize. I went from one forum to another. And I guess this is forum day, so at least, you know, I have my dick close at top, so at least I can take advantage of it, right? Again, my name is Angie Taylor. I am the incumbent in District E. I was appointed at the very end of 2014 and have served for two years and then was then elected. And, I mean, I was in 2014 and was elected in 2016 to do a four-year term of my own, and I'm asking for your support to send me back there again. Let's give you a little bit more of my background. Education changed my life. That's why education is one of those few things I'm really passionate about. I was the first in my family to go to college. I came from a really poor family, went to college, graduated, gave me opportunities that I would not have had otherwise. But this is why it changed my life. It changed my life, not just because of me. I have three degrees, all from the University of Nevada. It changed my life because it changed my family. When I finished my degree, my mother, over the age of fifty, went and got her degree. My sister, after having a family, went back and got her degree. Her children, I don't have any biological children, but now I have sixty-four thousand of them in the school district. But my nieces and nephews, they went to college, got their degrees, their spouses, same thing, and we have a deal in our family. I paid for their college, and now what they have to do is pay for the college of someone else in the family. So now we have a legacy of college going in our family. So education changed my family. So this is my why. It's personal to me. I've been blessed to serve this community for most of my life. It began when I served as student body president at Hug High School, continued when I went to serve at the University of Nevada, GO pack, MAMMA for a twenty-year career there. And now I continue to serve my community as a school board trustee. I am very proud of the accomplishments we've had over the past six years, especially during my first elected term, and I really want to continue that work. I will read off some of those. We've increased transparency and accountability. We have a data warehouse where people can go online and look at every single check that is written from the school district. We put in another group in place to oversee the spending of WC1, hundreds of millions of dollars to build new schools. We balanced the budget. For the first time in over a decade, we've increased teacher pay. We do have the highest graduation rate in history, and I'm proud of that, but this is what you have to see. Along the way, we also increased rigor. We have more students that are taking and passing honors classes than ever before. So what hasn't gotten easy has gotten more difficult. We reduced overcrowding because of WC1. We ranked in the eighteen percentile nationally with student growth after five years. This was a study that was done by Stanford, and it was quoted in a New York Times article. In the eighteenth percentile nationally, I'm extremely proud of that. We spent over a million dollars to repair and upgrade existing schools. We've received national recognition in several areas, parent engagement, social-emotional learning, and more. We have expanded the offerings for career and technical education and dual-credit offering. So there are many students now that, when they get their high school diploma, they're also getting the certification in what we call those mid-level skills. And some of them even graduate from TMCC before they graduate from their high school. That's kind of cool, right? We returned to updating the curriculum after having years of not being able to do it from the recession in '08. We have reduced our remediation rates, meaning when people go to college, they have to take remedial classes. That costs the students money and it costs them time. We've improved grade level efficiency. We do an annual self-evaluation as a board so we can continue to get better because trust really does matter. I'm asking you to vote for me because why, we're not finished. My goals for this year, we have to keep schools open, but make sure we do it safely. We don't want people to just be safe. We want them to feel safe. We have to continue, once we get out of this budget situation, continue our work to increase teacher pay and continue to focus on reducing our class sizes. I believe I'm the best candidate because being an incumbent allows people to see what you do, how you serve, how you listen, how you lead. And my track record demonstrates that I am for our schools and for our community. I will tell you what, I don't shy away from making the difficult decisions or from the difficult situations, but I will always focus on what's best for our sixty-four thousand students and our eight thousand educators in the Washoe County School District. You can find me and find out more at friendsofangie.com. I would appreciate your support, and thank you again for putting on this forum.
Thank you very much, Angie. Really appreciate that. Next up is Diane. Do you say Nicolette or Nicolay?
Nicolette.
Okay, Diane, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry. I think I bought too much of a laptop. It's a little smarter than I am, and clearly I need more training, which I will work on. I love education. It's not a problem. I don't know why I bothered to dress up. You can't see me. Having said that, I have two premises, and one of them is lifelong learning. Much like Angie, it's education that made a difference in my life, and I never stopped, never stopped going to school. In fact, I'm looking at something else right now as far as education for myself. I have a bachelor's degree in early childhood education, a master's in the art of teaching. I have the Ed Specialist Degree and PhD from UNR, and I'm very proud of that. And what I'm most proud of is probably that the PhD I finished in, in 2010, when I was fifty-eight, do the math, now you know how old I am. I truly believe that education is a key. There are many keys, parents, the community, et cetera. But education is a primary key to our success as individuals and as a society. I'm very strong about that. As an educator, which I have been one, I like to consider myself an educator since I was about three years old because I'm the oldest of six children, and I've been a teacher a very long time. I learned the wiles and the ways of having my brothers and sisters learn how to do something, and I'm very proud of that. We're a very tight family. I understand collaboration. Nothing can happen alone. To that point, there are seven trustees that sit at the table. Everyone has an agenda, something they're passionate about, something they're worried about, something they're proud of. And yet, when you sit down at that table, and when you get up in the morning, you have to realize that you must work together. It is a team, and you might be able to pull off a few small endeavors by yourself, but it takes everyone, administration, students, parents, and the general community working together to make great things happen, as I think is evidenced by this COVID time right now. Teamwork is the number one key. As a matter of fact, there's a favorite quote I have from Henry Ford that goes like this, "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress, and working together is success." And you're never going to be able to be totally thrilled with everything that's going on. That's human nature. I will have to step out there and say that, although we still have a lot of work to do, Washoe County School District is certainly finding out some of their strengths and some of their challenges. And there is no doubt in my mind that the team of administrators, the trustees, the parents, the students, and the community, we will continue to strengthen what we have. Having said that, I believe we need to continue to develop our distance learning. It's very clear, I think, to most of us that distance education isn't going anywhere. So we might as well utilize this time to continue to develop and identify those gaps, such as students who do not have hotspots, students who do not have the technological devices, teachers who do not have the training that they need to do what they want to do and be successful at their art. We also know that parents have now become our new faculty. They are our newest faculty. Parents are always the original and the forever teacher, but now they have become faculty members, and we must provide more support to them. They're struggling. And I don't know one parent who doesn't want to make this work for their child, for themselves, and for the community. Having said that, I would like to have us maybe backtrack, or in moving forward, I would like to see us work on collaborating in a focus-type venue so that we can understand the challenges that our business partners are experiencing. Because parents are having to be at home and help their student or hire someone to do it. Not everybody has those resources. We need the support of business, and we need to understand the challenges and the support that we can utilize together to continue along this path because I believe that we are going to continue to see, much like smoke. I mean, we've had smoke and snowstorms forever, and now we know that even with smoke and snowstorms, we can continue education. We can do it at home. So I really want us to continue to develop that. We moved here in 1993. Now, to get back a little more personal, and so two of our three children graduated from Washoe County Schools. So I've been very enmeshed in Washoe County Schools since 1993, a substitute teacher, a room mom, support for athletic events, et cetera. I've worked on curriculum and curriculum writing teams, career and technical education, for human development, family studies, for safe and healthy schools. I currently serve on the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission for Washoe County, Career and I currently serve on the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission for Washoe County, career and technical education. All of those are very important to me and I'm very honored to work in that capacity. One of the things-
Diane, time's up.
Oh my goodness. You can visit me at my website, dianenicolette.com. And thank you for this opportunity. Everyone stays safe and healthy and try and have a nice barbecue sometime this weekend.
Thank you, Diane. And our last speaker today is Craig Westner, who is also running in District G at large.
Good afternoon, Craig Westner, candidate for Washington County School District, Trustee District G. I am like Matthew. I am not at home. It's probably fairly obvious. I am spending the weekend with my kids in Truckee. And I'm just taking time out to find a decent wifi connection so that I can participate in this meeting. So I'm parked in this, in the Safeway parking lot in Truckee, so I apologize for the background. A little bit about myself, I moved to Nevada when I was in my early teens. My parents moved up here to, you know, just have a nicer life. And we, I, I moved to Virginia City and I graduated from Virginia City High School, class of fourteen. I left Virginia City, came down to Reno to attend UNR. I obtained two degrees, one in architecture, one in civil engineering. And I've been in Reno ever since. I absolutely love Reno and what it has to offer. I spent twenty-four years in the Nevada Air National Guard where I developed my leadership skills. I retired as a lieutenant colonel. I was a squadron commander and I was a group commander, commanding over six hundred people at one point in time in the guard. That was an incredible experience and as I mentioned, it built my, my leadership experience and my leadership skills. I'm a business owner in Reno. I am the senior partner and CEO of Loomis and Associates. We are a civil engineering design firm. We like to look at ourselves as improving our community through excellent engineering design. We've designed much of the infrastructure in and around Reno and I'm proud to look at it every day. Part of a, a, a great community is having an excellent education system. And over the years, I've watched our, our school districts change. As I, as I mentioned, I forgot to mention maybe that I raised my kids here in Reno and they were, they both graduated from the Washoe County School System. But over the years, I've watched it change. I, I don't see the career education as much anymore. The vocational training or the industrial arts is something that I've always kind of wondered about and I've questioned the school district about over the years when I've had the opportunity. I, so then the next thing I, I find out that Katie Holland Simon is leaving as a board trustee. And I live in her district. I think she's represented us well on the board and she's provided leadership in a business sense. So I, I viewed that as leaving a void. I felt a calling to come to fill that void. With my business background, my business experience, my leadership skills, that, that is something that I think is going to be, is certainly going to be part with Katie and I wanted to fill. My, my objectives is to provide that leadership to the board. Over the years, the board has had, has experienced the spotlight in not such a good way. And I'd like to see that change. I'd really like to see the boards be under the spotlight for good ways. It was heading that way, but lately you've seen the spotlight show up again. The, the initiatives that I like to see besides leadership at the board level is I'd like to really see us work on career education. I think we leave so many children behind because there was a focus a few years back of getting everybody to college. Not everybody wants to go to college. Not everybody has the ability to go to college. Not everybody necessarily wants to. There are a lot of good jobs in the vocational arts, in the industrial arts fields within, in and around Reno, Nevada. And I think we need to introduce our kids to some of those opportunities. If they want to go to college, great. And I think that's very admirable. I obviously went to college and, and I've benefited greatly from that. But we're leaving kids behind either without access to career education because of where they live or, or just access to it is primarily the reason. So that's one of my, one of the objectives that I want to see us achieve. Funding is another issue, something I think I can help with my business experience. I believe that we need to get to the school district to the national median level of funding. And that's vitally important. Another big issue has come up is, is equity in education and with technology. And we have a lack of technology in the older schools and we're seeing some great technologies coming to our newer schools from WC one. And we need to figure out a way to expand that across the whole school district. So those, those are the things that I really like to see happen. I really appreciate everybody's support in my candidacy for school district. You can see my website, craigwestner.com. For if you have any questions, you can contact me at craig@craigwestner.com. And thank you very much for your time. Appreciate your support.
Terrific, Craig. Really appreciate it. And that wraps up our call today. We've had ten excellent guests. And this will, we will provide a recording for this and appreciate everybody coming on today. Thank you very much.